Okay, we have achieved a quorum. We should get started. So, we're just continuation of our academic departments. So, Nellie, do you want to kick us off? I suppose we should, can we get a motion to adopt the objective?
Okay.
Okay.
Yes. Yes, this morning, I would like to introduce our Student Services Department. And we're going to go through, listening to the particular program heads and do an overview of this department. And I'd like to introduce Dr. Joe Fulcher, who is our Chief Student Service Director.
All right. Thanks, Nellie. It's with a great deal of pleasure that I introduce our Student Services team to you. I'm going to start at my far left. This is Cindy Grossman. She is the Supervisor of Sand Act. To Cindy's right is Jennifer Gorman, our Nursing and Wellness Program Manager. To my immediate right is Shirley Culver. Shirley manages our Mental Health Resource Center. Laura Keller is seated next to Shirley. She is our Supervisor for the Special Ed Ombuds Person's Office. And then Michelle Chrissy, who's the newest member of our team, is responsible for ADA, Section 504, and then our Title IX Office as well. She's the Coordinator for that program. And what I'd like to do today is just to provide an overview. And to give you a little context, I'm going to talk a little bit about the Student Services Office with some general descriptions made about the entire branch. So, we're going to shoot through that. These five will be the first presenters, of course. And then we have an additional five seated behind me, who will come up in the second half and talk a little bit about their programs as well. So, if you have questions along the way, please stop. But we're timed to go about five minutes a presenter. I'll kick it off with some general remarks, and then we'll move right into the, kind of, the body of the information.
Perfect.
Talk a little bit about the Student Services Office, first of all. It's my responsibility to work closely with the 10 department heads. So, we have coordinators, program managers, we have executive directors and directors. And we work closely to determine the type of support that's necessary and required for the different schools. We want every school to build their capacity. And so, when preparing for that, we work closely with the principals, with the teams, the school teams, to develop the kind of services and supports for their kids. Our support and services range from, I'm sorry, instructional services to non-instructional support, as well as the more clinical support that's provided by our Mental Health Resource Center. And we have to take into account the very distinct needs of the different areas, the five areas that we serve, as well as the 16 clusters. So, we try to align our services accordingly, based on the needs as we determine by discussions with principals and other staff at the school. There may be a large military family presence or housing presence in certain communities. Language issues need to be addressed in other communities. And so, those are the kinds of things, among others, that we look at when determining what should happen or what kind of support and services should be available and offered in those districts or in those areas. I've also encouraged our team to participate in the PLCs at the schools, SSCs, and any other side advisory committee that we think's important for our voice to be heard and to be a part of. I want to provide just a little background information. The early origins of Student Services date back to 1962, so it predates all of you on the dais, I'm sure. We have had a number of different groups and departments that have made up Student Services. And if you look back at the history, it goes back beyond 1962, but there were other names associated with it. It first became known as Student Services or Student Services Like Department around 1962. And some of the other offices that have been a part of Student Services have been, first of all, the flagship and core departments have been Counseling and Guidance, Nursing and Wellness. The Mental Health Resource Center has been a part of Student Services from the very, since they've been in our district. But we've also had Race Human Relations, SARP, OSOW, Child Development, Adult Education, Community Relations, Titles 1 through 4 Programs, Parent Universities, PALS. And then the Ballard Center was also a part of Student Services at one point. We serve, or we have about 300, 3,500 staff, and that's classified and certificated. And like I said earlier, it ranges from the instructional program to the clinical support, where we have psychiatrists, psychologists, providing some service to our students. We support every student in the district. So, 130,000 kids are touched and supported by this fine group and their staff on different occasions. We have our nurses who are providing health care to the district students, counselors who are attending to the personal and social needs, as well as the academic planning for our kids as well. The Sand Act program provides specialized services to adolescents who are pregnant or parenting. So, there's some support going on there. Our Extended Learning Opportunities Office coordinates the primetime program at over 130 different middle and elementary schools in the district. We have our Children and Youth in Transition Team that provides crucial support to youngsters and foster in institutional settings. They also work with district students who are homeless, as well as those who are dependents of military families. We have a Supplemental Educational Services Office. They're another program, and they coordinate tutoring for all eligible students. So, they work with about 80 outside vendors and serve about 3,000 or so students each year. You know a little bit about our Special Ed Division, serving annually between 15,000 and 16,000 students. We have a Special Ed Ombuds Person's Office that's responsible for assisting families weave through the department, state, and the local structures with regard to complaints and concerns about Special Ed decisions or Special Ed or IEPs. And then we have the 504 ADA Coordinator that ensures that all eligible 504 students receive their entitled services. And lastly, our Mental Health Resource Center team that works with some of our emotionally fragile and vulnerable students in the district. So, we have a pretty, pretty.
And Joe, the 3,500 staff are distinct from staff that are on school-side budgets. 3,500 staff in your budget. So, you work with, obviously, staff at the school sites, but they're on the school.
Right, right. A good portion of those staff members are in Special Ed.
Yeah, yeah.
So, there could be about 25, a little more than 2,500 in Special Ed settings. And the bulk, of course, are teachers, who are assigned to the school sites.
But just in terms of, I just want to clarify, in terms of budget.
Right.
They're in Student Services, not on the school-side budget. Those 3,500 people.
Yeah, they're, in terms of budget, they're paid out of primarily, if we look at the 2,500, out of the different department budgets that you see here.
Yes.
The 2,500 in Special Ed are paid for out of the Special Ed budget.
Yes.
And those could be the teachers, psychologists, et cetera.
Yeah. Okay, okay.
Just to be clear, so the Special Ed teachers at the school are not part of the school budget? When they're planning their budget, it's completely separate?
Right.
Okay.
That's correct. And part of the reason, just a little discussion about some of what took place last year. And I want to talk a little bit about the office for just one second, but I really want to go back to some of the services that are provided. Last year, we had an incredible amount of violence in different communities throughout this city. There were instances and incidents of violence occurring almost on a daily basis in some communities. I was called often about some of the things that took place, and so we had to marshal some support. I sent Mr. Culver and Dr. Meyer a map that showed some of the schools in our district that had been impacted by the violence in their community. So, we have kids who are coming to school after witnessing and experiencing a great deal of trauma in their lives and in their communities. And I'm going to make a point, but I want to tell this story, just so you have some perspective. And not only that, I think all of you watched and witnessed what happened with our police force. Almost on a weekly basis, we were seeing some senseless act of violence occur. And kids are certainly looking at this and wondering, where am I safe, or who's going to protect me, et cetera. On top of that, because of some of the.
The city's police force.
City police.
When you say "our" police force, let's just.
Right. City police, not school police. Thanks for that clarification. We know about the economic challenges faced by families, and some of those challenges led to some pretty tragic outcomes, with families taking their own lives, or the parents taking their own lives and the lives of their students. So, our kids have to look at that and wonder about what this economic trouble that they're in experience will lead to. Last year, and it's no wonder why, we had a record number of crises responses in our district. When Melissa Janik comes up and talks about our Counseling and Guidance Department, you'll hear about the number of crises responses, based in large part on some of the societal issues that have gone on and existed for the past several years. We have kids who are complaining about semantic issues, their stomach hurts, their head hurts and aches. And so, our Nursing and Wellness Department has had to see an increased number of students as well. Those are the kinds of kids that this group works with on a pretty regular and daily basis. These are the kids who need some support getting through the day, getting through the year. There could be a number of things interfering with their ability to focus in school. And so, we need to provide some outlet, some support, and some interventions for those students, so they can focus.
Do we have, you know, I hate to kind of be so general, but do we have any sort of, you know, numbers of kids in crisis, you know, some sort of crisis situation? I mean, I think it would be important, you know, both for us, but for the community as well, to understand the point that you're making, that we are seeing a trend of, you know, an increasing number of students who are in some sort of crisis, you know, caused by, you know, the situation in the economy and society. So, do we, you know, have any way of, you know, kind of capturing that point quantitatively?
Yeah, we do. And we could capture that information through the students seen in our Mental Health Resource Center.
Yeah.
And Shirley can talk to that when she speaks.
Okay.
Melissa Janik and our Counseling and Guidance Department, when she comes up next, she can talk a little bit about the data there. So, there are ways to capture that information and share it with you. And of course, Jennifer has details on the number of kids seen by our nurses on a day-to-day and year-to-year basis. So, yes, and we'll make sure to take a note of that and get that information to you. So, our job, you know, and some, my job, is to help provide some oversight and support of the delivery of services to the students across our district. And we want to make sure we meet as a team, and we do, on a pretty regular basis, to develop the procedures that are necessary for supporting our kids district-wide. And part of what needs to happen as well is that we develop the right type of approach, and it could be supporting policies and meeting the varied needs that I talked about earlier, of the students in our district. Here are just a few of the measures that are supported by the Student Services Office. And you've heard of all of these in the past. Ms. Barrera, you spent a lot of time promoting and pushing the Cal Fresh Food Stamp Initiative. We have an action plan that's being coordinated through this office. The next one is the ACSEP. It's the Comprehensive Evaluation Process, and that is to address the over-representation of African-American and Latino students in Special Ed. A few down, you'll see the CSEC training that we've offered throughout the district, and that is to look at human trafficking issues. We have a number of girls and boys who are in high school and middle schools, who are being impacted by that very matter. And so, we've offered some training and support to schools with regard to the CSEC issue. T-DAP response, you know about that, and you'll see the others. One of the ones that we're looking at closely and providing some support to is CRCP, A through G rollout. Our counselors, our entire team, but our counselors are providing a great deal of support and assistance to Sid Salazar and his team. So, these are just a few or a handful of some of the initiatives that we feel are important to kind of keep in mind. And here is just a real quick snapshot of the Student Services Office budget. You can see we have a current configuration of about three FTEs in my office. There's me, there's an Assistant, and a Confidential Secretary. So, the three of us coordinate some of those items that you just read through on the previous slide, as well as the support and coordination of the team that you see beside me. You can see a little dip in the 2010, 2011 year. If you go to that second box, where it talks about general fund and restricted and non-salaries of about 2,200, almost 2,300. That was based on a number of factors, but that is our service line. It covers printer cost, consultants, and a number of other things as well.
This is the director's budget?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right. This is my budget.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, the very next year, this year, I mean, it was certainly identified as not being enough to support the office with regard to the copier, printer, et cetera. So, you'll see some growth in that GFU for this year. Probably won't use all of that, but there is some growth. And down at the bottom are the totals. You'll see an increase from last year to this, in part because of benefits, salaries, et cetera. But that in a kind of a general nutshell is what budget we're taking advantage of in my office. And just a few more slides before I turn it over. Also compare the structure, Student Services structure, to other districts throughout California, as well as one in Nevada. You can see San Diego Unified is in the first column, San Jose, Long Beach, San Francisco, and then Sweetwater Union High School District. It ran, the departments range from a low of about four to as many as 11 in Long Beach Unified. The next line down details the number of students in each of those different districts. And in the bottom line is the coordinator position, or the chief, as you can see, director or assistant soup, that heads up and runs those different departments. So, we have some, most of those, all of those districts, with the exception of Clark County, are much smaller, but some have more departments in Student Services, some fewer. So, it's, I think the average there is about seven to eight different departments. And just before closing, want to talk a little bit about what could happen if further reductions occurred in Student Services. I think it's important that we have a voice at the table, and we do now, to talk about some of the personal, social interests of students throughout our district. I want to make sure that that's in the forefront of all discussions that occur and exist at not only the cabinet level, executive level, but even here, for that matter. So, we want to make sure that we have a coordinated set of services that we offer. And we do that by meeting and talking about what's needed in the different areas and clusters. Also want to make sure that all the legal mandates are followed and adhered to. For instance, the maintenance of effort in Special Ed. We have health and educational codes that need to be addressed and understood. So, all those things need to be at least discussed and also interpreted, so that before moving forward with decisions district-wide, we can have all the right people at the table inserting their ideas and thoughts. Also want to make sure that we continue for, not just this year, but next year, the collaboration that we've started with the other departments throughout the district. I feel that's important. Also are insisting, we're insisting that some strategic training occur with the movement that's going on, especially with counselors and nursing. We have some staff in places where they haven't worked in a number of years, and they may feel ill-equipped. And we want to do some real strategic professional development and training around those matters, so that we can make sure we have the best staff, best quality folks at the different programs.
As we hear from the departments, if there are issues that we're concerned about in terms of meeting, you know, mandates right now, as a result of, you know, the cutbacks over the past couple of years, it'd be good to bring those out.
Okay.
Yeah.
And here's my last slide before I turn it over to Michelle Chrissy. It just talks a little bit about what we are engaging in for the next few years. You heard from Dr. Meyer of the three academic focus for the, for the next year or so, professional learning communities, CRCP, and community engagement. So, we're going to continue to score that in all our efforts, as well as make sure that we engage our families, community members, agencies, kids, and schools with the kind of promotion of academic success that's necessary. So, again, college-ready career prep.
It's the new acronym.
And unless there's any questions or objections, we're going to move into the next presentation. Like I said earlier, Michelle Chrissy is our newest member. Not only is she handling our 504 ADAs and Title Nines, but she's also a big piece of our RTI rollout and development. So, I'm going to turn it over to Michelle and go down to your slide.
I can come.
Sure.
Section 504 is a piece of civil rights legislation that was designed to provide individual disabilities access to programs and services. So, Section 504 has a broader definition of disability than what you're, what you commonly think of in IDEA or Special Education. The Americans with Disabilities Act, Amendments Act of 2008 also protects people with disabilities against discrimination. And for our district, we have to think of everybody, which are parents, staff, and students. But in 2008, this piece of legislation also broadened the definition of disability. So, that might, we'll come back to that.
What is, what is a mitigating measure? What does that mean?
Mitigating measure, so in the past, students with a deficit disorder, if they took medication that allowed them to participate without accommodations, we could consider that. But now, we can no longer consider mitigating measures, except for in the case of eyeglasses. City Schools 504 Office was established in 1998. As a result, it was one of the outcomes of that corrective action plan with the California Department of Education, and we've operated with 2.0 FTE since then. And right now, it's an 11-month school psychologist and an 11-month administrative aide. Recently, we acquired Title IX gender discrimination as part of our responsibilities. And Section 504 is provided for out of the general fund. It's not covered under Special Education. So, Section 504 accommodations and services are required to be delivered in any environment on the school campus. So, that includes general education, but also extending after those instructional hours to primetime, extended learning opportunities, clubs, dances, sports, anything you can think of that the school is sponsoring, we would have to provide those accommodations and services. So, currently, we have just over 1,000 students and staff who are accessing 504 accommodations and services. And that looks like transportation, designated services, occupational therapy, physical therapy, APE. Any of those can be considered 504 services. Health techs, classroom assistants, and nursing services. So, this is just a year-over-year comparison. My budget's a little different than other departments. So, this is October 7, 2010, to October 7, 2011. And you can see that we've had an increase in school nursing and health technician positions. So, this is the same budget in a dollars and cents comparison. So, you can see how that has increased.
Why have you had those increases?
We think it's increased because in the past, the district has provided a standard level of service for health techs and nursing. But since now sites are accessing that funding because of students' needs. And so, what we're doing is trying to match, specifically match up students' needs with that funding and develop different procedures, so that when the student moves on or no longer has that need, that we're able to use that funding in other places. So, ADA 504 is a nationwide unfunded federal mandate, and it requires districts to provide access. So, access to curriculum through accommodations, and those accommodations frequently look like a health tech while a student with diabetes is on campus. It could be just organizational accommodations in a general education classroom, special technician for a student with toileting needs. Also, it requires districts to provide access to buildings through physical modifications. And we do have an ADA committee that meets the fourth Thursday of every month. We have an architect and other members that sit on the, sit on that, and we triage physical modification needs and recommend those. So, some of our most recent projects are installing grab bars and modifying transportation drop-off zones for safety and accessibility, redesigning fields, that was a big one, and also redesigning playgrounds for accessibility. Thank you for this opportunity to talk to you about our program.
Just could you go back one second to the budget page? So, the, 1, 2, 3, 4, the school nurse allocation went from 163 to 761, about half a million. How, could you explain that?
In the past, school nurses were, had a standard amount of time at each site. Can you correct me if I'm wrong?
It has something to do with the reduction of nursing, the nursing team, over the past year.
In the school budgets.
Right. So, there are a number of schools that are finding the services just aren't available for those kids. So, what they may do, because the nursing hasn't been assigned to that school in the same amount as in previous years, instead of an all-week nurse, they may have a nurse there for a day or part of a day. A lot of schools are looking at developing 504 plans for those students, especially students who are either diabetic or have some other type of need. So, that's why we're thinking we, there's an increase in the number of 504 plans demanding additional nurse time or health tech time or some other type of support.
There's also been a huge increase over the last three years in the numbers of diabetic students we're having, who require nurse there every day for at least an hour or so to provide the services they need when they need insulin. The rest of the time, the health technicians can be on-site to provide some of those services.
So, I guess the part that's difficult to understand is kind of like a reorganization. There was a cutback in the overall nursing funding, right? And then, that increase resulted in increase in this part, but still an overall decrease in nurse funding?
That's what we're thinking. And when Jennifer talks, she'll speak a little bit to that.
These are nurses that are working with 504 students, as opposed to the nurses that would.
Well, but I'm assuming what happened, from what you've said, was that there were some regular nurses at the school that were handling the 504 kids, and then when they
Absolutely.
eliminated that person or reduced them, then there were these holes. So, you kind of make a reduction, like all the things we do, and then you go back and fill the holes, and then the reduction isn't quite as much as we thought.
Yeah. That's exactly it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Michelle?
No.
We next have Laura Keller, who's, Laura heads a two-person office that's designed to resolve parental questions, complaints, and concerns about Special Ed at the lowest possible level. So, Laura, go ahead.
Thank you for this opportunity to talk to you about my program. Our office was created as a result of an agreement between San Diego Unified School District, the Office of Civil Rights, and California Department of Education from the 1996-97 corrective action agreement. A task force of parents and community members, Special Education, General Education, created a job description, qualifications, roles, and responsibilities, and recommended, in response to that corrective action plan, that the Office of the Ombudsperson be established. We were originally staffed with five ombuds people and one full-time clerical position. After a budget reduction in 2004, we're left with two people. We serve 200 schools, including non-public schools, juvenile court and community schools, and charter schools. We serve as a liaison between district staff, parents, students, and provide information regarding the district's Special Education program. We also cover state and federal law and policy and procedure. We encourage and model parental support and participation in the IEP process. We facilitate resolutions, issues, and complaints related to students' Special Education services and supports using conflict management and mediation techniques. We do this at the lowest possible level, meaning at the school site. We investigate and report on our locally filed compliance complaints. We investigate and report on our locally filed compliance complaints. Our focus for the coming year remains pretty steady in that we do want to continue to model and support parents, increase their knowledge of the special education systems. This is especially important at a transition time when families are used to seeing self-contained classrooms and we're now implementing the specialized academic instruction. So, helping families understand the change. We provide direct support for meaningful parent involvement in the IEP process. It's more than lip service, but we make sure that parents understand their rights and understand the necessity of their being at the table and an active participant in the process. We model and encourage collaboration between families and district staff as a means for providing effective and productive instruction of our students. We support and facilitate communication between home and school, and we support district staff by providing information and resources for working with families and an understanding of a family systems approach.
So, has part of your job over the past couple of years been in, say, classroom situations under inclusion that are struggling, that, you know, there might be issues that are coming up?
In some cases, it's helping the teacher understand a parent's point of view
Yeah.
as a student is included. In other cases, it's helping parents understand the structure and instruction of a general education environment and how that needs to be modified and adapted for their particular student.
Yeah. But that's, in other words, that's occupying a deal of your time, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
This is our budget. We have two full-time equivalents. My position is a supervising ombuds person. I have Richard Miller, my colleague who works with me and has incredible knowledge of military support systems and serves most of the schools that are in our military housing area. We have a very small operations expense budget that covers primarily mileage as we travel from school to school and meet with families and school site staff. We currently serve actively about 70 families per month. We respond to almost 1,200 requests for information per year. This is from parents, school sites and from members of the community. And these are for either contacts by email or phone contacts. We conduct an average of five formal compliance complaint investigations per year, and we provide outreach to the community via community collaboration with our military families, foster programs, teacher education programs and parent support groups. We are a one-of-a-kind program in California, so I was not able to compare and contrast to other programs.
That because the office was created under this...
Under the corrective action agreement. Through early intervention with families experiencing difficulties, we believe that the number of special education, with special education program services, we're able to decrease the number of due process filings because we are able to facilitate good communication and problem-solving skills at the school site level. So, we can bring it home to the families rather than creating a bureaucratic process. And finally, we're a direct service in line with San Diego Unified School District's reform model in that we are part of parent engagement and support. Questions?
As Laura mentioned, she's an objective party, not associated with special ed, very strong advocate of making sure that students and parents get what they're entitled to receive. And she's also been a big part of our CAC meetings and gatherings. She attends just about all the meetings. Our Mental Health Resource Center is next. Shirley Kovar is considered a state and regional expert in the area of mental health services in our schools. We're one of just a handful of districts across the country to offer this valuable support and service. So, Shirley, why don't you take it away?
The Mental Health Resource Center, as Joe said, is a little bit unique, but it's created lots of interest around our state, and many school districts have come to see the programs we do and try to see how they might replicate them in their own districts. We were started as part of the Safe Schools, Healthy Students Grant, but the primary focus of that grant was to launch the Mental Health Resource Center and find a way to sustain it. So, from the very beginning, including in our very first year, we reached out to county mental health and began establishing contracts with mental health, child welfare, probation to work together to bring services to our students where they are. Having some of the poorest students, they could not always get to the larger mental health system. Students who are having the most challenges and their families who are having the most challenges couldn't get to the mental health system. So, bringing services to the students works better in terms of the school district who has the student there every day getting the support it needs from the mental health services that are available right at our site. In the research, you would see that the prevalence numbers for mental health issues in childhood are about 25 percent, not 25 percent of kids at any one time, but over the course of their childhood. So, that ranges from students who are very seriously emotionally disturbed to students who have a crisis at some time in their childhood in their family. They can access some services through their health insurance, and the change in the mental health parity law in California in the last two years is hopefully increasing the resources available to families who have students who are more in the moderate range of problems they have to deal with.
So, 25 percent of students will at some point in their childhood...
In their childhood, need some kind of mental health intervention, according to the research literature.
Yep.
And the number in the SED range is like around 2 percent, which is still a lot of students when you think of San Diego Unified. That's what, 2,600 kids? So, you can see there's a lot of work to do. So, when we began the Mental Health Resource Center, it was with the idea of, of course, we don't have a budget to support services at all schools. Who do we serve and how do we best help the school district meet the school district's goals for students by strategically offering services? So, over the course of our almost 10 years now, we have increasingly taken on the most challenging and the most hard-to-reach population of students and families in order that teachers who have students in front of them every day have a student who can learn. And so, you'll see that in the kinds of programs that we offer. In our budget, you can see it's primarily increased over the years, and if you look back, you know, we started with the $3 million a year grant, and we have very little grant money at this point. It's either contracts with county mental health or special ed and a very small amount of unrestricted dollars and then some foundation dollars that come in.
Sorry, the unrestricted portion.
69 percent of our budget is revenue from noneducational sources from our contracts, and it, the whole budget funds about 96 FTE. And FTE for the contract is 62 and 1/2 staff. For special ed, it's 26 staff. For the other restricted, which is foundation money, it's about two staff. And then, for unrestricted, it's 5 and 1/2. Our unrestricted dollars go primarily to ALBA, well, actually solely to ALBA, and they either support services right on the site, and we also have staff who support the students as they transition back to a comprehensive site so that they will be successful once they leave. So, that's kind of the total focus of our unrestricted dollars.
I've got a question about that. On the, I understand that 69 percent comes from outside sources, but in terms of the 2.3, you know, 2.3 million from special ed, now originally, it sounded like there was a grant for 9 million that funded the office, right? For the budget?
Initially.
Right, initially, right at the beginning.
Yeah.
And then, now you've been pulling from different resources.
Right.
How was it determined that that amount of money would come from special ed as opposed to any amount, including nothing or getting, obviously, you're trying to get as much as you can from outside sources, and I understand maybe ALBA doesn't fall into the special ed category, but how do you...
It was an evolutionary process. When we first started here, I had worked for county mental health for 25 years before I came to the district, so we had the relationships in place. And special ed came and said, will you help us? They were offering programs for ED students that really weren't working and were costing lots of money. So, we began partnering with them to run, to transform the programs with mental health staff so that they would be more cost-effective and more effective in general. So, we took our monies from county mental health and partnered with special ed, and that's what I was talking about when we targeted the most needy kids. So, we started with day treatment programs where we really had none inside the district. The county ran one in the community, but it didn't really serve our students very well. So, we began transforming that, and we would use the county mental health dollars and some special ed dollars. So, it evolved over time, that 2.3 million, as we transformed their existing programs. So, some of it was in other budgets and then came to ours.
That's what I'm saying. So, basically, before, if you didn't have this office, that there would be money that would have been spent for special ed for these services.
Right.
And you just kind of brought it into your program.
Right.
It's not like there was an extra 2 million taken out of the special ed. It was just re...
For example, last summer, not this past summer, a year ago, we did some transformation at Riley, and we changed the staff there from a more traditional educational staff to a more mental health-focused staff. So, some of that money now shows in our budget, but we really saved money when we did the overall transformation. We didn't get any new money from the district. We just changed how the district was spending its money and reduced all the disruptive behavior, and now kids are more successful there. It means fewer kids go to non-public school, fewer residential. And so, a big part of our focus with programs we're doing here in the district is to reduce the residential spending and the non-public school spending that is very expensive, and the students don't necessarily get what they need. For example, in the patient, I saw recently from another SALPA, they were pleased at their residential portion, which they identified as 0.27 of 1 percent, which if we had 0.27 of 1 percent, we would have over 300 kids in residential, and in the course of a year, we've had 50 the last two years. And so, we're saving a lot of money over other districts by doing these community-based programs, and so a slot in a day treatment program for one student costs about $27,000 non-educationally. Or the same kid in residential, it's close to $150,000. So, every time we're able to serve the student here in our own programs, and so five students for the cost of one student going to residential.
And are you, maybe it's later in your presentation, you're going to get to the new funding situation with the residential, okay, being brought in district, okay?
Yes.
Shirley, before you move on, the county funding line prompts me to ask, in the last year or so, when the state has had to make some adjustments to programs, and we know that a year and plus ago, they cut some county health programs, did that ripple into your workload or was that separate?
It didn't affect our budget. County mental health itself over the Health and Human Service Agency really was able to handle most of their budget reductions without affecting services to clients. And so, we have continually only increased our contract budgets with county mental health, even over these last three years, budget has been so terrible. We're on the verge of, we're negotiating with them to increase, add a program for our youngest children in the next six months. So, been very fortunate to be able to match our resources with their resources to benefit our kids.
Just, so, Bill, would you, has that impacted our budget anyplace else then?
Well, that's where I was going, Richard. I wasn't sure. I know, Joe, we talked about how some of the things the county had to do to make adjustments, cut services meant passing workload or some cost onto us. If it wasn't in this area, where might it have been?
Well, it would be in this area, and that's why I mentioned from the very beginning that we were well-positioned, I think, to adjust.
I haven't gotten to that piece yet, where the change in what was known as AB 3632.
Yeah.
That was, the mental health services on IEP has been the financial and programmatic responsibility of county mental health up until this past year. And it has been true for 25 years, and it was a program I launched when I was at the county. And this last year, the counties filed a lawsuit because they were tired of not getting paid to do it, and won. And so, since then, a law has passed sending the responsibility for that back to school district. So, it totally went away July 1, the old law, and the new law, it's totally on our plate. So, we've been invited, our special ed director, executive director, Sue Martinez and I tomorrow to go to the State AB 114 Committee, which is implementing this new law, to present what we're doing here because they've heard about what we're doing, us and one other SALPA.
So, Bill, we've assumed a lot of the responsibilities. We're doing more of the assessments. We have some of the day treatment facilities right here in the district that we could provide support, where we could provide support to those students. We're still wrestling with the whole matter of the residential placements, and I think Shirley, in the minute or so that she has left, can talk a little bit about that.
But so, if we're assuming the services, is that increasing our cost? I mean, that's, I guess, the question.
Yes, there's a funding stream coming with it from the state, but whether it will be sufficient to offset the cost is still in debate because this year, mental health was still given 98 million, as well as the school district's funding streams for it. And the discussion at the state and part of the discussion at the committee tomorrow is, we don't think we need the 98 million after this year, which is not true in terms of meeting, particularly because of the residential costs of that. And they were handled differently before. So, there will be a lot of lobbying and talking and discussion going on about how the funding stream they built will not be enough without the 98 million they need to increase the school budget, that piece.
So, in the short term...
But it's not a done deal.
I think we'll be okay this year.
Yes.
When we look out to 2012, 13, that's where the concerns exist. So, we're trying to get some clarity from the state with regard to the amount of funding that they'll be sending and promising us.
So, it seems like we're doing a great job, but our message tomorrow should be, you gotta cough up the money.
Absolutely.
It shouldn't be, we can handle it.
Right, absolutely.
No, and no one on the committee, I think, is saying that.
Yeah.
It's state finance and various others who want to improve the state budget.
Yeah.
It will not be enough, even as we work to make it be more efficient than we've already been doing it. We still have to expand. There are services that will be, that are on IEPs that we now have to pay for and need to that we haven't had to before. So, it's a real issue, but we're just better positioned than most districts and SALPAs to hit the ground running, and we have very, we've been bringing down our residential costs for the last five years because of our institution of day treatment. And the other advantage to having day treatment versus residential is Medi-Cal doesn't pay any costs related to residential, but in day treatment, Medi-Cal covers nearly the full cost for a Medi-Cal-eligible kid. And so, a district where about half of our kids in day treatment are Medi-Cal-eligible, it pays. And so, the feds pay for a part of that, and the state pays. And so the feds pay for a part of that and the state pays the other part of that and the local pays a tiny, the local county mental health. So each of these things, every time we keep kids in our district, it not only saves us on that side, it increases the revenue on this side.
And we've done a good job of keeping kids in our district. When you compare what's happened here to other districts our size or even smaller, they send, as a rule, almost twice as many kids to residential placements as we do. So the services are effective, they're working, but you're right, we need to send a message that that funding is still crucial. Shirley, why don't you go ahead and wrap up so we can move on?
Okay. So these are the number of students we provided services to over the last year, actually it was probably the year before. And we do a range of services, from prevention services where we bid on county contracts that are out and we're the successful provider because every time we have mental health staff out at our school sites, even if they're doing prevention services, it gives them time to consult with teachers and administrators about kids who are suffering or struggling. And so the more we have services, the more we're able to really touch the rest of our staff in terms of improving the students' ability to access their education.
It's a quick question. I see you have Price Charities listed.
Yes.
I don't see Open Door listed with the Jacobs and area one.
That's not a revenue source to us.
Okay.
It's an MOU without really money involved in it.
Well, yeah.
Whereas Price Charities actually funds our staff.
Okay.
And we had met with Jacobs about doing that, but they elected not to.
Okay. So do we need to put pressure on them to use a different model? Because they're generating revenue based upon their work with our students and we're not able, as I understand it, you're not able to assess the accountability of those students because it's different.
It is different. I don't want to spend too much time on that, but-
Okay, can we talk about that because-
We could talk about that later.
I don't want us to miss out, if they're generating revenue because of our students, I don't think you get to keep that revenue. I think it should come to the district.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know if they generate revenue.
Okay.
But, okay, and then I talked to you about the AB 114 and again, our being a model around the state. But just so you have some idea, the types of students we're really talking about that we're dealing with, these are not students with minor mental health crises. These are students who are actively psychotic, students who are having suicidal attempts and thinking going on, students who have deep depression so much that they're not doing their schoolwork, students who are at risk of residential or even when we did the assessment of the students as they come into ALBA, all of those, 90% of those students meet criteria for a mental health diagnosis. About two-thirds of them, non-conduct disorder and about a third, conduct disorder. So they're mental health kids who are getting expelled. And so they need these services to benefit and to really stay in school. And that's the focus of what we're doing.
Thank you, Shirley.
Yeah.
I'm going to hold on to this.
(laughing) It might be having control.
Let me introduce Jennifer Gorman. And Jennifer, in 2010, I just got to brag a little bit, she was named the Central Office Administrator of the Year by ACSA. We're lucky to have her and we'll let her give an overview of her program, Nursing and Wellness.
Congratulations, Jennifer.
Thank you. The first slide I'm not going to go through is just kind of an overview of, you know, what we do, what our mission is. I want to, wait, go back, I want to just focus a little bit on the last bullet.
Turn it over.
The last bullet on community involvement involves everything we do and the contracts that we bring to you to approve, the Healthy Start contracts, the school-based health centers, of which that resolution last week with City Heights Collaborative is a part of that. Those funds come in also support nursing positions, you're probably aware. We have mobile dental vision, medical services, we have clinics provided for students with (inaudible). A variety of people coming to provide dental health screening and other treatment services. We provide over 200 nursing students with opportunity for (inaudible). We work in collaboration, I'm sure you've seen with the Health Department on a lot of issues, especially H1N1 and TDAF, you've seen, and belong to a number of community task forces and coalitions. We provide services to charter schools, which also provide extra nurse positions. We provide support to the primetime program as well from (inaudible). I wanted to point out that two of those positions out of 504 are for nurses to be available for those primetime students during those hours who have health issues and staff that need training. Next slide is the, all the legal mandates, I didn't specify all the numbers, but there are a number of legal mandates that go into what all the nurses in the nursing program has to do. Not all education codes, some are health and safety codes, some are business and profession codes, such as under business and profession requiring us to follow doctor's orders. We can't follow orders from parents, we have to follow orders from doctors. And so sometimes we get into a little kind of a conflict with that and have to work that out with the site and with the doctor and the parent and figure out what is best for the child. And as far as also supervising staff who are providing healthcare services is also under the business and profession (inaudible). We provide supervision and monitoring for staff providing these services, even though my nurses technically can't supervise the employees as employees, but they still have to kind of supervise how they're doing as far as providing health services.
Let's see if it's after.
All right, well, we'll just do this. There's two slides dealing with the budget because I wanted to break it out into, you know, under my department, 5400 is the basic health services in my office and 5404 is the (inaudible) my department budgets that I have kind of control over. By the next slide, you'll see in your handout is 5405, which is really the Medi-Cal collaborative funding that is under my department, but not under my control, so to speak. It's, the collaborative decides how those funds are sent, are spent. And we do have, going back to the nursing slide, we do have an additional amount in the budget this year for staff, for the 20.7 nurses added as central general fund to help try to make up for the loss of nurse funding at the sites. However, most of those nurses, especially at elementary schools, are only having about four hours a week to spend in the schools, doing all the professional things, buying more and more on unlicensed staff in the schools to do things that nurses used to do, but maybe that don't require a license, so we're asking them to do a lot more.
If it'd be helpful, and I don't need this now, but for all of these to have prior year actual full-time equivalents as well, because we have the dollar comparisons, but we don't have the actual staffing comparisons.
It wasn't on the model that we had to present, but I could provide that.
I'm not criticizing, I'm just asking if we can do that and if we can add that to the future model, because it helps in all of these discussions to know, not just the dollars, but obviously the individuals. Thank you.
And nothing in this budget includes the site-funded nurse positions or the special ed nurse positions?
So Jennifer, can I just ask you, because this is, you know, we've had this conversation for a while now, at what point does it make sense to continue to sort of, you know, give some allocation to schools for nurses and then have some, I mean, would it, would we be better off centralizing all nurses? Just taking those budgets, taking, you know, the provision of nurses out of school budgets, put it in a central, you know, in your department?
I mean, we have sufficient numbers.
Yeah.
For me, it would make more sense in terms of coming up with a allocation formula or an assignment formula that's more based on student needs, which is all the students with diabetes and that kind of thing, rather than just strictly enrollment numbers, which is what the allocations have been based on in the past.
Yeah, so I guess, you know, Bill, that might be something that maybe if there's, you know, consensus of the board, that we look into in the development of the 1213 budget. Because it seems like, I mean, we've talked about this with other issues as well with police services, that relying on school-by-school decisions, you know, to determine the number of nurses that we have, results in situations where one school might be out of their budget subsidizing other schools because they paid for a nurse and then the other schools in the area are going to need a nurse. And so that nurse, you know, ends up going, as opposed to just centralizing it and then, you know, determining, you know, based on needs, you know.
A comparative study.
Well, I think it also has to do with sort of what I'm going to call discretionary versus mandated services.
Yeah, yeah.
And so you might have the schools deciding right now on the discretionary sort of level, which includes some of the mandated stuff. But then, as Richard was saying, you're going around and filling the holes. These people ordered a nurse, so their mandated stuff is taken care of. These people didn't order a nurse and they've got the, I'm just from what you're saying, they've got the three diabetics. And I don't know if you can tell from this year how much that happened in terms of, if there's any way to sort it out or quantify it, that because these people ordered nurses and these people didn't, that we're actually the ones, to the extent to which the ones who funded a nurse are penalized, basically.
Mr. Brewer, if I might?
Yeah.
I've been meeting with the X Factor planning budget team-
Yeah.
-on this very issue, both nurses and counselors, because of the certain things that we're dealing with. There's going to be a lot of discussion about this, there's going to be a lot of, and I believe they'll be making a recommendation to you and to me as the labor relations person to try and resolve this issue because of the, as Jennifer pointed out, that the model of staffing at every school, particularly for nurses, is, kind of doesn't make much sense in the current environment we're in. And I know that we're working on that, so I just want to let everybody know that.
Okay. And it seems to me it would be a combination, I mean, you talked about identified needs versus enrollment, but there's also the issue, they might have a school that doesn't have a certain number of identified needs, but just the fact the general population doesn't have access to healthcare.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, so they might not have, they might only qualify with this number of diabetics, for example, and another school where they have a lot of access to medical services, they have a few diabetics, but what about the fact that this whole population?
And that would be included in the formula we would use in terms of-
Right, overall, right.
-social economics of the community and access to healthcare.
That's part of the need that we're defining.
Sorry, Shirley, what, a comparative study?
No, I was just saying that what it should be, we should be looking at it as what we're doing now is compared to a more generalized program that's based upon the needs of service versus the enrollment. Because when student population change and if a school maybe didn't need a nurse this particular year, but next year there is more diabetic students enrolled at that school, now all of a sudden, they might need to have a nurse, whereas they haven't had, had the requirement for one before.
Yeah.
So I think it is centralized area that gives us more of an opportunity because the school might say, I don't need a nurse.
Yeah.
Until the year starts and all of a sudden, they're saying-
And for diabetics.
Yeah.
Yeah, and some of the schools that actually didn't fund nurse time, were actually providing more nurse time than they would have gotten under the enrollment formula, just because they have so many students with these needs at one school-
Yeah.
...this year. They may not have them next year.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. This is just a summary of the revenue generation that our school nurses do. So we do the Medi-Cal administrative activities time study and that has brought in over three year period, over $2 million mandated cost claims for services that we provide. Actually gets given to school sites, not to my program. And I can say that some of those mandated cost claims are probably going to go down in terms of reimbursement this year because we've had to turn over a lot of those activities to school. If we have fewer nurses in the district, that means there's less income in all of these areas because there's less people to do the time survey and to do, put in for the reimbursement. And then the second thing under generation by district nurses in the, this should have been in the restricted area, we bring in Medi-Cal LEA income for the IEP assessments and services and it's about $675,000. Only nurses can do those services. And money from grants, both of these grants actually happen to end in March of this year, but right now we have the asthma grant and the wellness grant to provide nursing positions and services. And just, you know, the value of the services provided by the community agencies that we can't really put into number.
And with the Medi-Cal LEA income, we're looking at that number growing over the course of the next few years because of the way we'll be implementing or inputting that information. So, right now, we're getting about, I guess in total, about $2 million or so dollars. Early projections are that we'll get closer to $3 million with the new random moment in time process that'll be implemented. And that includes pretty much all of student services, but primarily the nurses, counselors and the special ed team.
Does that involve, so I know when we started doing the work on food stamps, that one of the issues that we identified is that we do a pretty good job generally in enrolling kids who are eligible for free and reduced lunch, but we don't do as good a job in enrolling kids, or the county or the, you know, the system doesn't do as good a job in enrolling kids who are eligible for Medi-Cal. And that, you know, if we were just enrolling more kids, you know, we could be bringing in more revenue, is that?
Well, the Medi-Cal collaborative now does have, supports a one person, F1FTE clerk that all she does is help families enroll in Medi-Cal.
Yeah.
And we've been working on programs similar to this over a lot of years and there's a lot of turnover in that Medi-Cal enrollment process. So parents get in or people get enrolled and then they disenroll because they don't renew and all these other things.
Yeah.
So she helps work on that, too. But we have a really good program in place to help get families enrolled. We have a little card the parents fill out and it says whether they have insurance. She gets all of those from all the schools and actually personally contacts those parents. She's bilingual, she, you know, speaks to those parents, helps them with the actual process of enrolling in those programs.
So the enrollment part is fine. Where we struggle, and not mightily, is getting staff to document the support they're providing to those students. That's how we generate the revenue for this particular program.
Right.
And it should be a lot easier in the upcoming years because of the random moment in time. It won't be all staff, but just a random sample of some staff that's submitting the information.
Okay.
Okay, this is the slide I was looking for. This is the slide that just shows you some of the accomplishments. Our nurses keep a monthly report of all of their activities in their office and this shows you just from last year, the numbers of students that were screened, students who had their first grade physicals, admissions cleared, and part of this provided faculty and staff in service programs, case management of all these students with chronic health problems, specialized healthcare procedures, medications administered, and on and on. And some of these numbers, I have to tell you, will probably go down this year because there are less nurses out there doing some of these things and filling out this monthly report is a task when you're only there four hours a week, trying to, and trying to get adequate numbers. There was another category I didn't include here on the numbers of students actually seen in the health office every day. And when the nurse is there, every single student is written down, but when the nurse is not there, other people have other priorities and it's not their priority to write every single student on that paper, so the numbers will probably be less on some of these categories. And yet the needs for the students, in particular case management for chronic healthcare problems and doing these 504 plans and IEP team meeting, child abuse reports and all of those kind of things are greater.
Yeah.
Just a little bit of a summary, I contacted a couple of other school districts to get some idea of how we compare in terms of nursing enrollments, free and reduced lunch percentages, site nurses versus pool nurses. And right now, in our district, about 76 sites have- And right now, in our district, about 76 sites have nurse time. That was funded by the site, 86 are under the general fund pool of nurses, special ed pool. And we're having some screening teams, we're just starting to implement for vision screening. And in Long Beach Unified, all the sites, all the schools have a nurse assigned. I don't know if they have a, if they allocate according to enrollment or if it's based on other factors. And then San Jose has a site nurse assigned to every site based on a formula, which does include some of those factors of health acuity and other issues that I was, and I'd like to be able to have the opportunity to gather that kind of information about how we could do that.
So it's, just trying to, are we doing a better or worse job than Long Beach or San Jose in terms of providing nursing services?
Well, in terms of the overall numbers, in terms of like, if you figured out, I think when I figured out exactly, you know, how much nurse time per site, for like San Jose, it was about .5, and for us it was about .36 or something, so we were a little worse in terms of overall numbers. And then the health office coverage, you know, some districts have specific staff who their specific job is at least part of the time to cover that health office, and they're specifically trained, they have CPR training, we can train them to do emergency injections and those kind of things that we need. In our district, often that's not the case because we don't have health techs at every school, so it becomes the job of the secretary and the clerk, who aren't really qualified, don't want to volunteer, don't have CPR training to, for us to ask if they can be assigned to give emergency glucagon injection or to take care of diabetic students when they come in to have their blood sugar checked, those kind of things. That's one of the reasons we're, that more health techs are being added through 504 plans is so that there's somebody there who can do those things. Had a staff person at every school who could do that every day, we wouldn't need to add more staff. But obviously, there's funding issues. The funding sources, pretty much kind of the same between San Diego Unified and San Jose Unified. Didn't get a clear answer from the person I contacted at Long Beach. I think because they maybe were just a lead nurse, not really an administrator, and didn't know how they were funded. And the central office supports, just kind of comparing, the, San Jose, for example, has data entry clerks who go out and help enter health data into the various programs, which is something, again, we, health techs can do that. We're trying to get these clerks and secretaries and enrollment clerks to do those kinds of things, and that's always a little bit of a struggle. Yeah, any other questions about that?
Just one, really quickly, but in terms of the identification versus enrollment, I'm wondering if you think there would be any value in terms of a kind of a cluster model in terms of, you know, nurses assigned to particular clusters, but itinerant within that cluster in terms of there are more diabetics at the school this year and that school?
We already do that.
Because, okay. And also in terms of, people point out in terms of siblings and carryover through the years and so forth, in terms of elementary and the high school and so forth, you know, there's more involvement that way rather than just kind of being randomly out there.
For logistical reasons, for traveling around to take care of all these diabetics and IEPs and 504 plans, we do have the nursing program divided into seven clusters. It's not the same as the areas because of just the travel time that's required in getting from one place to another, so.
Okay.
Okay, and then this is just some general things of impacts of cuts. You know, we're struggling out there to meet all the health and safety needs. And just to give you an example, we had 13 new kindergartners who have diabetes, as well as six or seven other new students who were either new to the district or diagnosed over the summer. We've had two students being diagnosed new with diabetes since school started. So we're constantly dealing with, and it's a constant shuffle of these 504 plans and nursing needs all over the district. You know, this new model that we have with the itinerant pool providing services for staff are struggling with how, how does this work and how, you know, they're not getting the same services they were, and yet, you know, they're not sure what to expect, and we're trying to clarify that, but people are struggling with, because they're used to certain level of service or certain things the nurse did, that now we're saying, no, you need to assign someone else to do that, kind of thing. And, you know, the last bullet, of course, we get new public health challenges or federal mandates. And develop policies and procedures on that. Diabetes just is an ongoing, growing issue. Nobody knows why type 1 diabetes is growing so much. Wellness policy, we went through that for a couple of years, and we're still working on that process through the grant. We had that measles outbreak at one of our schools a few years ago. We had a severe flu season a few years back, the H1N1 pandemic and pertussis epidemic in California, and the T-DAP requirement. So all of that takes up a tremendous amount of, not only the site nurses' time, but our time in the district office, and so.
Right, any other questions?
I have a couple. On page 34, the, you have the list of the student case management, chronic health problems, about 9,600. And then you have the student study team IEP 504 health plan meetings referrals, 8,400. Are there overlap between those? Or is that totally distinct cases, or are they kind of the core focuses that the nurses have?
Okay.
Oh, sorry, page 34.
Is this one, Joe?
It's, at least in our slide. It's the accomplishments one.
There.
Right. So what's your question again? I'm sorry.
That's okay. The student case management has about 9,600 last year, I guess, and then the student study team IEP 504 has about 8,400. I was wondering, are those absolutely distinct cases, or are those pretty much, are they overlapping, or is those the core consistent cases that you're working on?
Those are the number of, in the case of the chronic health problems, that would be the number of students that are being served, you know, over time, timeframe. And the one for the student study team IEP 504, those are numbers of actual attending meetings, writing up plans, you know, making referrals.
So is it fair to say, I mean, I'm trying to get a sense of the, out of the total number of students we have, and I know you have a lot of other issues, physical screenings, et cetera, but is it fair to say that this 10,000 round number, 9,600, are the, is a consistent number that you're spending most of your focus on as far as, I mean, students who are seen more often or, you know, have the folders, the big binders at the sites that move around?
Right. That would be students who require a lot of credentialed licensed school nurse time at each school site compared to the general population of students who you might see only when you do their vision screening.
The other, the one thing I've thought about since we started this whole, that first meeting you and I had with nurses some months ago, and then the Tiger Teams, is obviously the whole management of the data and so forth. And I realize, right now, having a binder on every kid, which when they move sites, gets moved around, is the way you're doing it, it just clearly is not the most efficient. We are looking at doing a bond next year. I would think that having a in-depth analysis as to what it would take to, you know, put everything on one of these and have every nurse and counselor have one of these and truly, because, you know, the whole medical world is going electronic, that all records should be available online by anyone at any time. And so I realize funding that is a big issue. So if we're putting, looking ahead to doing this, I think trying to determine what it would cost, what the IT, and how it coordinates with the whole IT upgrades that the IT department's doing, what it would need for the hardware, the software, everything, you know, obviously there's training elements to move to that, because there's a possibility, if the board does decide to go ahead and we have that bond, we could fund this program. The last bond pretty much focused just on laptops for kids, but didn't look at, very little of the back of the house for staff efficiencies in all areas, whether it's transportation or custodial or nurses. So that would be something that we would really need numbers on within a few months here, and it might require a consultant to help put that together, working with Daryl. But clearly, we need to get into the, at least the 20th century and hopefully the 21st century on, and that would make it easier overall, I think, so.
Yeah, I think when the Tiger Team first recommended this very notion, we all thought it was a great idea, but knew the cost would be prohibitive.
Right.
So I'll certainly work with Daryl to find out if we can get some projected cost and get back to you with those numbers.
Great, thank you.
Is there a concern about electronic HIPAA and FERPA?
Those are the kind of issues that we'll have to, uh, discuss.
And I was told that you can't access district programs like Zangol and exceed on an iPad? I don't know if that's true, but that's.
First of all, I'm not suggesting this piece of equipment.
Right.
I'm just using this as a generic thing.
With the appropriate software and hardware.
You know, and obviously all the legal and privacy issues, but ultimately, the entire world, medical world is moving this way, and, you know, for brighter reasons, you know, funding, we are behind on, and public agencies like ours are behind on this and all our other areas, so I think ultimately, and there's a significant potential funding source with the bond, so, thank you.
I'll make sure you get that information. Cindy Grossman is our last of this five, and she is our supervisor of SandApp, and she's maintained focus on our pregnant and parenting teens despite annual fiscal concerns and certainly operational challenges as well. So Cindy, go ahead and start.
Good morning. One of the questions that I've been asked over my eight years here with the district is why does the district have a county-wide program? So I thought I would start with sharing that history with you. SandApp began 26 years ago as a result of the teachers and the counselors at Garfield working in the pregnant minor program. They were supporting the pregnant and parenting students in the classroom and really believed that for those students to be successful with their education, that they really needed a home-based component of case management. And those teachers and counselors worked with stakeholders within the county of San Diego in gearing up for a statewide grant, which was the Adolescent Family Life Program Grant. And it was determined through those stakeholders that San Diego Unified would take the lead for the county in writing that grant. We were awarded 26 years ago, and that funding maintains the foundation of the department today. The, in addition to that, we have sustained funding and expanded funding through successful grant writing to expand services to include parent-child interaction therapy, counseling and therapy services, and we also offer a shaken baby prevention program called the Period of Purple Crying. We serve approximately 1,500 pregnant and parenting youth and their children throughout San Diego County through case management, counseling, and/or therapy services annually, with a current staff of 25 members that includes 20 case managers, four therapists, three clerical support staff, and two supervisors. Our services are, as I said, we, they're provided throughout the county. We have staff, both case managers and therapists, outstationed at various sites throughout the county, specifically programs that have CalSafe programs and/or school districts that have high incidences of teen, teens who are pregnant or parenting. Within San Diego Unified, I have a full-time person working at Garfield, Twain, Lincoln, Crawford, and just this year, we're now at San Diego High School, serving the students there. Our mission is to enhance the health, educational potential, and healthy relationships of pregnant and parenting adolescents, their children, siblings, and parents by promoting a collaborative, integrative support system. And our goals include healthy mom, healthy baby, completion of high school, positive parenting skills, and a focus on the prevention of second unplanned pregnancies. Prior to the current fiscal year, SandApp has been 100% grant-funded. However, since 2009, 10 fiscal year, there was a significant decrease in our state funding, and that decrease could have potentially led to a significant loss of services. However, in October 2009, I approached the First Five Commission of San Diego, and we were awarded an emergency critical needs grant that completely sustained all of our services across the county and maintained all the staffing in the department. That funding currently goes through June 30 of 2012. It was a three-year project. In 2010, we-
And what are the prospects for renewal of that?
Unless the, there is a change in the state on the removal of first five funds, there's a lawsuit currently at the state level. If the first five commissions win that lawsuit, then there is a potential for additional funding. At this point, it's not looking like they will win it anytime soon, and therefore, our funding will end on June 30.
So just to add, with the recent restructuring of SandApp, we have a staff person assigned to manage and monitor the available grants and contracts out there, the grants. So she's busily searching under every rock and crevice to find what additional support we could use for the upcoming years.
In 2010, last October, we were awarded a grant from the California Wellness Foundation for core operating support that supports a significant part of my salary and benefits to find additional grant funding for the services to pregnant and parenting teens. The benefit of the grant, not only that it helps to support opportunities for looking for grants, but a true benefit is because my salaries and benefits are covered by California Wellness, our other program grant dollars are then available to support staff to work directly with the students. This current fiscal year, the CalLearn program, which is a program serving, providing case management for pregnant and parenting teens on welfare, the governor suspended that program for one year, and that was a loss of over $800,000 to our department. And in addition, there was an additional state cut to our AFLP, the Adolescent Family Life Program, of almost $18,000 this year. The, our current AFLP grant also is due to expire this coming June 30, although we are hearing from the state that they will be releasing a proposal for additional five-year of funding. However, for the first time in 26 years, that proposal is being released as a competitive bid, which means that other organizations within the county could compete against the district for those services. So I'm out in the community and working with stakeholders to try and secure that funding for us and working with the other agencies so they don't compete against us. Our current resources for the, for the department, if you can go to that slide, Joe, right here. This is an overview of what our current funding is looking like with the Adolescent Family Life Program, supports a little over 6.0 FTEs, the salary and benefits totaling little over $433,000, and our operating expenses are almost $34,000 in that grant. And as I just said, the current term will end June 30, and we'll be submitting when that grant comes out. With our first five contract, that supports almost nine FTEs, salaries and benefits $635,556,000, with operating expenses of almost $84,500. And again, that will end on June 30, 2012, unless other funding becomes available for first five.
You don't have to go through each one, but if there's something that you want to highlight?
Okay.
For instance, the funding is-
I did, I actually, I was interested on this chart in knowing which are the most threatened, and you don't necessarily have to answer it now. And also, I'd like to know, if possible, how many of the total students served are from with outside of the boundaries of San Diego Unified, and how many of that are within the city of San Diego, but still with outside, outside our boundaries? Obviously, we don't go to San Ysidro, and we don't go to Rancho Bernardo, because I think part of our strategy looking to next year might be going directly to the Board of Supervisors for some supplemental funding and, or to, not supplemental, to make up for potential loss funding, and maybe even the city, although I think the board's the most logical place. So I think I'd like to start and planning ahead for that, and so if we can get a sense of those numbers, and then, then I think we can help work on that strategy.
And those numbers are available now, so we can- And those numbers are available now, so we can get them to you rather quickly.
Perfect. Thank you.
Oh, you can tell them that.
Yeah, I can, we serve, on average, 300 students within San Diego Unified boundaries, whether they're going to our schools or others, but approximately 300, and the remaining 1,200 are county-wide.
Okay. And then the only other question would be, if you can break down, how many would be the city of San Diego, but not San Diego Unified, specialized as well? And then which maybe give us a total estimated major funding threat for next year? I know it's hard to know for sure, but just, you know, which ones are absolutely unlikely to be renewed, and which are? Thank you.
The First Five is a threat, very unlikely that that funds will continue. The AFL Program, the third row, will continue till January 30 of 2013, possibly June 30. We're pending a carryover through June 30. California Wellness will go through October 2013, and AFLP, potential threat, but hopefully, we'll be able to write the best competitive grant and maintain those services for the district. The Title 19 match, the second slide from the bottom, when First Five dollars goes away, we'll no longer have the matching capacity or ability to draw down Title 19 dollars. So those funds will be eliminated as well.
And is the argument on First Five is that it is not within the scope of what First Five was intended? Is that the litigation as to why it wouldn't continue? That, I mean, why are they, I don't understand the point of the litigation.
We're, 97% of the families in which we serve have a child zero to five, and that's why First Five has supported this program. The reason why it won't continue is that we were funded under their emerging critical needs bucket of money, and their policy says that emerging critical needs agencies can have a grant term of no more than three years, and our three years will end on June 30.
The litigation is the state sweeping First Five monies to cover the budget. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
In addition, we have, as I mentioned before, we have a Shake and Baby Prevention Program, and that was a funded, a program funded by the United Way. That was a grant that we successfully were awarded. And although that funding ended two years ago, we have sustained that service through other means, being able to continue to provide that very supportive program with these young teen moms who are very high risk of child abuse and neglect and shake and baby. So we're happy that we were able to sustain that. We also provide counseling program, counseling services, rather, through San Diego State Schools Social Work interns. And our most recent addition of services is we're now able to provide breast pumps, electric breast pumps, to teen moms so that they can return to school and continue to pump. And that was through, is through a collaboration with the Breastfeeding Coalition here in San Diego. That is becoming a very successful program. We're finding that more girls are returning to school when they have pumps available to them. So it is very successful, and we're happy to be providing those. We cannot compare, if you can go to the comparison slide. We can't compare our services to other school districts. However, we can compare our services to other counties within the state. There are 37 counties across the state that provide the AFLP program. And if you look at the slide, you can see, in the 2009-10 fiscal year, Los Angeles County was serving the most pregnant and parenting teens with the highest contract amount, with San Diego being the second highest in the state, and then Riverside and San Bernardino. As I had mentioned earlier, there was a cut in that year, and then a further cut this fiscal year. As a result of that, if you look at the current funding now, Los Angeles County has lost almost $3 million and is serving about 15,000 less students. And for ours, we've left, we lost over $500,000, and we're serving almost half of the number in this funding source. And Riverside and San Bernardino, because of the cuts to their counties, they chose to no longer accept the state funding. And so, as you can see on the current slide, they both have zero in their department. In summary, during our fiscal year 2010-11, we serve 1,500 in pregnant and parenting teens and their children. We graduated 139 students this past June with a high school diploma or equivalent, and they completed our program. And I'm very happy to report that we maintained a repeat pregnancy rate of 2.7% compared to the national average of 17.5, and the statewide AFLP average of 5%. So we are doing a very good job of preventing those second pregnancies. When you look at, for this last fiscal year, looking at the students across the county that we, I'm sorry, look at the current fiscal year, when we look at the number of students that we're currently serving who are enrolled in school between the time period of September 6 and October 5, so that first month of school, we had 464 students that were enrolled in a school across the county. And just using the, our ADA rate of the district, I approximated that those 464 students would bring in approximately $278,000 of ADA by attending school on a regular basis county-wide. So it is a very, our program is supportive to students, it's supportive to schools, it helps the students stay in school, we're preventing second pregnancies, we're decreasing high-risk factors of poor parenting, and incidences of child abuse and neglect by the Case Management Counseling and Therapy Services in the department.
Any questions?
Thank you.
We have five more presenters that we can get through in 35 minutes. I think they are very interested in getting this done today.
Okay, let's do that.
Now, thank you. You can say whatever you want.
Thank you.
And I'll just introduce the team as they present their information. We have Christiana Trout-Mcfee, who'll go first, and she quietly goes about her work and has operated the before and after-school programs at a very high level for the past several years. She's responsible for our Extended Learning Opportunities, and I'm going to turn it over to Christiana.
Thank you. I apologize for my voice, I'm coming down with a cold, I believe. Extended Learning Opportunities Department oversees the primetime before and after-school programs, serving students in kinder through ninth grade, providing academic support and enrichment activities at 132 of our elementary and middle-level schools. In addition, the department's also responsible for implementing new licensed childcare programs within the district. Extended Learning Opportunities Department was created over 13 years ago. It initially started out as an adult education program, and then established as extended learning, creating a number of different intervention programs. Those include extended-day reading, mathematics, K-C, Core Course Intercession, summer school, including community-based English tutoring programs. And since 1998, the Extended Learning Opportunities Department also implemented, along with the city of San Diego, the before-and-after-school program. Since 1998, we've actually expanded the program, offering services for all schools that are eligible based on the After-School Education Safety Program Grant. In addition, the department's responsible for the complete After-School Education and Safety Program Grant at this time. That grant amount is $21.8 million, $21.8 million, as mandated by the California Ed Code. The department oversees the before-and-after-school programs, serving over 16,000 students annually, and approximately 13,000 students daily, before and after-school programs. In addition, the fee-based program, this is actually a licensed program that is a non-district program. For where we can't provide services within the After-School Education and Safety Program, we actually implement services for fee to families. That encompasses the preschool programs, the infant programs, school-age programs, as well as Head Start programs. And then we're also providing services currently, we're actually at 70 schools, serving over 4,000 students, and generating revenue of over $450,000 to the district.
The question, the fee-based, or based on the locations, the funds, or the licensing, are these fees paid for by the families and reimbursed? Are they paid for by these different departments, or is it a variety of?
Families pay the fees.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, okay.
The department encompasses and is completely funded out of the restricted funds, as mandated by the California Education Code, since actually September of 2009, including all of the staff. Currently, we have seven positions within the department that include one manager, four supervising admin assistant, two positions. Each of those positions are responsible for 33 schools. We also have a supervising admin assistant, one bilingual position, and a budget specialist within the department. And then furthermore, you can see that the funds are actually broken down and allocated as the state has determined per each school, whether it's before-school program funds, after-school, as well as supplemental, specific to each school. I'm sorry, Joe, go back one.
Sure.
So, in addition, as the costs are increasing, the funds are remaining at the same level. So this year, we've required all of our contractors, we have currently have 10 contractors that we work with that provide services at 122 of our schools. We implemented a 10% in-kind service match, bringing in additional $1.8 million for services. We implemented that this year in their contracts. So I just wanted to share that piece with you. So in other words, that for each of the contractors, based on their funding allocation for each of the schools, they're required to provide services and 10%, as 10% match of their contract allocation. So, and we have a spreadsheet that we've established that they're required to submit to our office, showing what type of service.
10% maximum.
I'm sorry?
Does that mean 10% maximum?
So they're not, they have to provide 10% over above their contract. So if their contract amounts $100,000, they'll now have to provide services up to $110,000.
And the staff that we have that, you know, are responsible for overseeing 33 schools, what is it that they do? What are they, what does oversight mean?
I'm sorry, ask the question.
Got staff that are each responsible for 33 schools, and what does that mean? What's their, what is?
So each of those positions, they're responsible for actually evaluating the performance of the program, program quality, compliance, as well as parent calls, enrolling students, the application process, actually, the overall performance of each one of those schools, whether it's working with families, the community, the schools, a variety of different areas.
And then what is that evaluation used for?
The evaluation determines whether we contract with them the following year. So progress, since 2008, the primetime program, we're required to undergo an annual audit. And since 2008, we passed our audits, as required by the California Education Code, as well as California's Audit Guide. In addition, we generated $1.8 million additional dollars as a reference to the 10% increase in the contract. We also implemented a web-based attendance accountability system, improving our attendance accountability system, it's a scanning system, throughout the district. In addition, we've also, in collaboration with Think Together, offered a full summer bridging program, one-of-a-kind, this past summer, bringing in another additional $750,000 to the district, and providing services to additional 600 students over the summer. We continue to employ district credentialed teachers for the academic component to align the academic support with the regular school day. And we also provide literacy training, ongoing literacy training, training over 200 staff within primetime. We work with, closely with Food Services, we just began implementing a supper program. It actually piloted last year at 10 schools, we've increased it this year to 20 schools, and we're looking to expand that to all of our primetime sites, which has been a great improvement comparable to the snack that they were receiving for many of our families. They also, we've also created 21, it's now 23 that I've learned, new licensed fee-based programs, where the funds are limited, not only in the After-School Education and Safety Program Grant, then also with the Child Development Centers. So we're actually increasing the services that we're bringing into the district, and we've increased by 23 new licensed fee-based programs in the last two years.
So are there, are all of the teachers doing the academic programs, our staff, district staff?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And how do they, how do teachers, you know, how do they get those jobs? How do they?
So what I've established is that the contractors are required to set aside a specific allocation within their agreement. Then what I provide to the principal is a form that says, okay, this is the amount of funding that you have available, please select the credentialed teachers based on the students that are participating in primetime, performing below grade level. So while you're determining the credentialed teachers, the curriculum, and the duration of the program, the days and hours of the program. And then the contractor is required to employ that credentialed teacher, as stipulated by the principal.
The principal recommends the teachers that would be involved, yeah.
But the teachers need to be interested in teaching as well.
Right.
So teacher interest and principal selection.
Right.
And in general, it's teachers from that school that are working in the after-school program?
Almost, always, always, yeah.
Almost.
Yeah, yeah.
How do we compare? Primetime is the largest before-and-after-school program within our consortium in Region 9, compared to Imperial, Orange, and San Diego Counties, and we're the second-largest in the state. In comparison to our annual evaluations, we show a higher success rate in student safety and academic performance as compared to the other districts. We also, the other districts and contractors often, they replicate the policies and procedures that we've implemented within San Diego Unified, as well as the number of partners. That's the other piece that's very different. Because of the number of schools and the level of services that we provide, we have a greater opportunity to work with a number of different agencies and maximizing the services that they can bring to each one of our schools, comparable to the other smaller districts, where most of them really just truly work with maybe one organization, which limits them. Primetime has been recognized by the County Office of Education annually as an exemplary program, as well as Children's Initiative often selects primetime for visits by state assembly members, and we're going to continue that this year as well, we anticipate. Impacts and conclusions, as a district faces financial challenges, school closures, whatever those challenges may be, we're always looking to figure out how that's going to impact the program, what can we do to help support and ensure a smooth transition at all levels, whether that's the student, the parent, the community, as well as our contractors, the schools, and the number of different departments that we work with within San Diego Unified. We're looking to continue to expand our supper programs, our licensed programs, depending on the needs of where the needs are, as well as the blended preschool program, and that's a piece that I didn't have an opportunity to touch upon. What the blended preschool program, just real quickly, that we just piloted actually this year, is one of our licensed fee-based preschool programs, and also the SEAC, the Special Education Early Childhood Program, will be blending the students, integrating the students from the SEAC program into that licensed fee base with the General Ed student. So then they're prepared as they go into kinder. We continue, it's ongoing, we evaluate the program quality and the academic performance to identify the needs and supports, what can we be doing differently, better at each one of our sites, not viewing it as a whole, but also viewing it school by school. And that goes back to the supervising admin assistant twos.
Have you rejected any of your primetime? Have you canceled any? Have you canceled any of your staff at some of these school sites? I understand, and certainly, I don't, you know, I've just heard that sometimes teachers are just selected because they volunteer, they don't have great skills in their daytime classroom, but they volunteer, and so they're allowed to work at primetime. And it's just another supplemental income for them, because they may have additional- And it's just another supplemental income for them because they may have additional needs, but they're not meeting the benefits of the children either daytime or in the evening. And so is there any way that this is being dealt with? I mean, is there, I heard you say that you're evaluating, but is there any follow-up to these evaluations? If people aren't doing, if things aren't going great?
So, in reference to the contractor, we do evaluate them, and they have a seven-day action plan, and we do support them because they are our partners. But if for any reason they can't meet the expectations, then we do not renew their contract the following year. Each year it varies, it's been, I think we had six or seven different schools that weren't, for whatever reason, not able to meet those requirements. They do very well at other sites, but maybe it wasn't a good fit at that specific site. But in reference to your question for the teachers, I have heard that, yes, where teachers have been selected to maybe just do the homework assistance, and it hasn't truly been very effective. This year, we are monitoring that much more closely and working closer with the school sites and the principals, and hopefully to avoid that from occurring.
This year, okay. And could we get the expectations of these primetime people? I mean, is it okay for us to see what we expect from them? Thank you.
Can I ask questions on your budget page 46? If it's the same numbers you have, the department allocations? Now, as I understand it, the total number served is about 20,500, right? If you take the primetime program serving 16,000 students at 132 schools, and then the fee-based one of 4,000 students. And on this budget, is any of this, or how much of this, is general fund-supported? It's all grant-based?
No, it's all grant-based. Those 4,000 students that are served are fee-based and paid by families, so they will not be reflective in our budget.
And then all of the other funds here are, none of this is general fund, it's all ACES?
That's correct.
Okay. And as I understand it, the law prohibits charging fees in any other programs, state law, on any of the other ones besides the 4,000?
We don't charge fees in primetime.
Right.
It is a free program to families. It is completely separate. The fee-based program is literally a childcare program. So we can offer those services to families.
I mean, I'll say, you know, from the beginning, as a parent, many, many years ago, and my girls are in high school now, but when they first got into kindergarten and had free after-school care, I thought it was wonderful that the state was paying for it, but it just seems absurd for families that were paying, in some cases, thousands and thousands dollars a year for after-school care, suddenly got this free service. You know, I didn't, I'm not complaining as an individual, but it's clearly an area where, you know, there should be reimbursement for families that can support it, although I guess if we're not subsidizing it, it doesn't, it doesn't hurt us directly, but it's just another example, I think, of, it's an example of something where it just makes absolutely no sense, and I don't, I guess, you know, from a legislative point of view, all it would do is help the state budget, but.
It's federal money, correct?
It's state.
Oh, it's state?
It's state funding.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean, it's just, it just, I mean, literally, even if you charge, you know, 50 bucks a day or whatever, it's, I mean, it was the greatest, best deal in the world to suddenly have, first of all, full-day kindergarten, which started the first year my eldest went to kindergarten, and then after-school care, I thought, you know, gravy train here. So it just seems like it's something to discuss with our legislators. Here's people who are certain, above a certain income level, which my guess is quite a, you know, a certain number of our primetime people are, who could pay something and, you know, given our state budget.
So this is not the portion of Title I?
No.
No?
It's SES.
All right. That's coming up.
But it was some changes because before, the city helped fund us.
Yeah.
And then that funding went away, because I know it was a big transition.
That's correct, exactly.
That happened, or I guess around 2005 or '06 or so.
Correct.
And some of the schools actually lost their daycare for a minute because the city wouldn't do it any longer, and we were doing part of it, and we, they had this big discussion, and so it's good that we have survived, but there were a lot of parents that were, for a while, that we couldn't provide the daycare for anymore. So it wasn't, in the beginning, it was really great, and then it was pared down quite a bit over the last few years, yeah.
Jesse, I don't know how many statewide are in this program who are above a certain level, who could be charged something and potentially generate millions of dollars, which could be earmarked back to schools, but.
And the city pulled out as a funding source because what, how were they paying for? Their budget situation?
Right.
They're paying for it out of their general fund?
Right. So they allocated funding, initially it started between San Diego Unified and the City of San Diego.
Right, and Mayor Golden.
And we had this partnership where we contracted with the city.
Yeah.
And then the city subcontracted with the organization, and they contributed city dollars to providing before and after-school programs.
Yeah.
Prior to the state funding becoming available. And they had those funds allocated. So we had all of our schools, elementary, middle schools were funded, whereas right now, it's only those that are eligible within the After-School Education and Safety Program Grant, which means those 26 schools that are currently not funded by the grant, because they're not eligible based on free and reduced lunch percentages.
Point of order, Mr. President. We did schedule some meetings for the time between 1:00 and 2:00, but the real issue is that I'm starving.
Yeah.
But I don't know if, and it takes longer because we ask questions, but the usefulness of this is to get our questions answered, not just to hear what we have to say. So I don't know if we can continue this in the afternoon and combine it with what we were doing in the afternoon, or?
So you can't, you can't hang on until 1:30, so you're, you're done.
Is that what everybody wants to do? I don't think we're going to be finished by 1:30. We, it was seven minutes, and we took about 20 minutes on that one.
We did.
Not your fault, but.
But I think the questions are important, and I don't want to rush through.
So if we, yeah, I agree. So if we break until 2:00, can we, or is GSA going to take two hours? I know, but will that take?
It's going to take two hours.
Take two hours?
And I have to leave at 3:15 to pick up.
Okay. Well, what's the preference of the board?
Beef.
Well, I don't want to hear anything. No, I just, I think if we, I do want them to be able to finish today, so if we take part of the time for them and part of the time for the GSA.
Just do them first.
Let's do them first, is that okay?
Is that all right with you guys? 2:00.
2:00.
All right, thank you.
Right.
Do you want to do GSA 2 down here? And we're going to go up.
Down here at 2:00.
We'll be down. Do this, then we can break, and then we can maybe go upstairs.
Yeah. There aren't many times.
I know.
We'll do whatever, we'll do whatever.
Yeah.
Of course.
You okay?
I'm good.
That's a good answer.
First five.
Good shaking off.
I think I got school-wise.
Oh, yeah, Susan, who's.
If you can get around too, that would be helpful.
I don't know if that's going to happen.